Everyone, it is Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. A long time ago on this day, Mount St. Helens erupted, also to my dad's birthday, so it's a great day. Happy to see your faces. Welcome to the regular board meeting. Officially calling this meeting to order at 4:30. We have two hours slated, but we've got a pretty full agenda, so we'll try and roll through. Make sure we get everyone out on time. I'd like to note before we get started that Michelle Weber notified us in advance that she'll be a little late, but she will be arriving to this meeting shortly. So let's go ahead and start with roll call. Let's go with Susan Cox. Thanks, Susan, and Pete Knox.
Here.
Thanks, Pete, Don Norden.
Here.
Thank you, Emily Seacord.
Here.
Thank you, and I do not see Gino at the moment. We will make note of when he logs on. So let's go ahead and start. We'll just do the usual comments from the board president. I just wanted to say I'm excited for this week we have ahead of us. I just wanted to thank this Board of Directors for the movement we've had regarding the GM search, and thank you, everyone, for taking the time to add your schedules to make this all possible. So really, we really appreciate everyone on this team. I also wanted to call to your attention that the July 29th through August 2nd is the ACTA Board Members Conference out in Salt Lake City. Highly encourage the board members to attend this event. Dawn and I spoke to you about the ACTA Conference and Expo that we attended in Florida. It's, you know, this is a little bit different because it's specifically for board members. You can go on the website, you can look at the different topics that they're going to be addressing in their breakout sessions. It's a great learning opportunity. It's a great networking opportunity. It's also a good opportunity to see how LTD is highly regarded on a national level. So if you're interested, please talk to Mark, but this, this is just a fantastic opportunity, and I really highly encourage everyone to take full advantage of that and take a deep dive into what it means to be a board member on a transit agency. So with that, I'm going to actually turn it over to Mark, and I'm sure Mark can tell you about all the great ACTA conferences he goes to and how helpful it is for his position.
Yeah, no, I'll have Camille send out the link to the agenda and thing for that, so you can take a look, and they're well worthwhile. So I've got a few things to update you on. We've been preparing for the World Championships Oregon 22. We've been working with the Governor's Office and ODOT and some of our other transit partners to plan kind of a statewide transportation system to get people around where they need to go during the championships. For us, we'll be adding service and frequency to like RMX as people are coming and going out of the, out of Hayward Field. We'll be taking a look at, you know, making sure that we can get people in and out smoothly. We're working with ODOT to have some airport to hotel service, just because there is none in this town. They're expecting a large number of people to be flying into Eugene more than normal, and we just want to make sure that, you know, the community is presented well and that the transportation looks good and they're able to get where they need to go in a really easy way. So the planning is still underway for that. You know, it's kind of crunch time. We're a little under two months away, and we'll continue to work together to make sure that we can move people around smoothly. The July board meeting, we're anticipating canceling that. It would be right in the middle of the championships, and so we're trying to get most of our work done in June, and we will have a July work session, but we don't anticipate having a regular meeting in July. So that would, and then also next month's meeting, we're anticipating it being our first in-person meeting. And so Mark, that will have it at our Glenwood Boardroom. And some of you have never visited the Glenwood Boardroom, so it'll be a first. And so we still will have a virtual option for those who either don't feel comfortable meeting in person or for, and particularly for the community, so they can still attend and participate. And the last thing is, as Kayla mentioned, the GM process, we're ready to go for next week. It'll be a very busy week. I thank you for, you know, your input regarding and discussions we had to try to make the process as good as possible. And, you know, I know Dawn reached out and wanted to add some people to panel and invitations to the, to, to the public forums and whatnot, and so we did that, and Emily and I had discussions about participation for the board, and so we've made accommodations. So any board member can participate in any interview panel or forum as they have time for, so they can go observe and, and, you know, make sure that, spend as much time as they can trying to understand the candidates, because, you know, it is a very important decision. So I appreciate that discussion, Emily. And let's see, I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks for that, Mark. Susan, did you just raise your hand?
Apologize. So with regard to the Oregon 22, that sounds like a, it's a huge opportunity for Oregon, not just Eugene, but are there budget implications with that in terms of providing those extra services? I assume there are extra services.
Yeah, so our fixed route, I mean, yes, there are budget implications. We accounted for that, for the fixed route, but also we've been working with ODOT to fund the additional services. And so we'll be, we'll be coordinating them, even like the airport service and those kind of things. We'll, we'll help coordinate them, but, but ODOT has agreed to fund most of those services, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good question, Susan. Dawn, you have your hand up?
Yeah, excuse me, I, on the community forums for May 24th, we had a list of entities that were going to be invited. Do we have names associated with those entities yet?
We had, we're in the process of confirming who from those entities are coming. I mean, you know, they invited, we invited them and, and reached out to get confirmation. So it's a, it's still in process.
And I do want to note that Michelle Weber has now joined, so thanks, Michelle. Okay, great. Thanks for that, Mark, and for also the questions. We are going to move on. I unfortunately had to miss the work session, and I didn't get any requests for additions to the agenda from that. Are there any announcements from board members? Okay, all right. Great, so let's go ahead and move on to Employee of the Month then. And I see Brian has joined us. Nice to see you, Brian.
Nice to see you all as well. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, President Vargas and fellow board members. So my name is Brian Penn, and the Transit Operations Manager here, Lane Transit, and I am pleased to announce that bus operator Jeremy Jones is going to be, has been selected as the May 2022 Employee of the Month. Jeremy was hired as a bus operator on March 4th, 2013, and since that time, he's received seven Safe Driving Awards. On this occasion, Mr. Jones was doing the evening variant of the 67 route when he saw commotion in the road in front of him. As he got closer, he realized that it was Tony, one of our longtime riders, laying in the middle of the road with his wheelchair overturned. Jeremy quickly set the maxi brake, ran over to help Tony off the pavement and back into his wheelchair. He made sure that Tony was okay before he got back in the bus and continued on his route. So I hope you'll join me in thanking Jeremy for looking out for our treasured writer and working together to help someone in our community. We also asked his supervisor, Tracy Smith, for a comment, and one of the things that he really enjoys about Jeremy is that he has a larger-than-life personality. Every time I see him, he greets me with a giant smile and an upbeat attitude. So thank you, Jeremy, for that. A job well done. Greatly appreciated.
Yes, round of applause for Jeremy. We greatly appreciate our operators and what a, what a great thing that he did for a longtime rider, Tony. That's, that's just really heartwarming to hear that, and thank you for sharing, Brian. We love, we love to hear this, so.
Yeah, good stuff.
Being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, great, so let's go ahead and move on to audience participation, so I will turn it over to Camille.
Thank you, Caitlin. I will go ahead and read through the instructions to give anybody an opportunity to raise their hand. To indicate that you would like to provide testimony, please use the Raise Your Hand button. For those attending via phone only, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your time to speak, your name will be called. For those attending via phone only, the last three digits of your phone number will be called. Please state your name, city of residence, and who you are representing for the audio record. Once you have provided testimony, your hand will be lowered. Please do not raise your hand again. Only one opportunity to speak is provided. For those unable or not wanting to speak publicly, testimony may be provided via email at clerk@ltv.org. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per community member. A timer will be displayed on the screen and will beep when the three minutes is up. And Caitlin, I'm still not showing anyone indicating they would like to speak, so I will hand it back to you.
Great, thank you so much, Camille. I appreciate it.
I have a, I have a hand that just popped up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We have Bill Bradley. Bill, go ahead whenever you are ready.
Thanks, Camille. Sorry about the late hand raise there. Bill Bradley, Executive Board Officer, ATU 757. Thanks for taking time tonight to hear my testimony. First, you know, I want to say congratulations to Jeremy Jones. What a much deserved Employee of the Month. He is really a bright light in the bus operators ranks. Always a good interaction when I'm talking to Jeremy. So first, good evening, Board of Directors. I come before you tonight with a few comments on this year's proposed budget that you guys will approve later. And I want to say, you know, a few things on how it will impact LTD frontline workforce. Last year, I gave testimony that praised the addition of public safety officers and bus operator positions, and it really looked like LTD was on track to improve services to the community and bring much-needed resources to the frontline workforce. These workers have frankly been overworked during the COVID-19 pandemic. We always had hope that relief was on the way, but then this budget dropped, showing a reduction or requested bus operators that will ensure that the system will continue to run on over time, necessitating some of our workers, perhaps with no choice, that they'll have to work six days a week to keep the system running. I mean, this can't be the solution anymore. Appropriate staffing that allows our most critical employees, those that provide the service to the public, the need of rest away from LTD. So when they're driving a bus or assisting a passenger or answering questions about a route, they can be their best. These workers are, are what make LTD an amazing service, and we truly do want to be an amazing service. I gave testimony a year ago that said LTD had an amazing opportunity to reintroduce itself to the public. I mean, right now, we have everything in our favor: high gas prices, return-to-work plans, expensive used car prices. But LTD right now is only seeming content to offer what it's offering for the last year. And then maybe in two years' time, we can do service improvements, but we might miss our opportunity. There's potential writers out there that will look at LTD and their changes of circumstances and see that it's not the service for them. They may have a new house, they may have a new job, they would require them to think about how they do their commute, and LTD might not be that answer, because we don't have the service out there. This reduced service is driving up the cost per service hour, that is true. Less service plus higher materials and administrative costs will create a higher cost per service hour. But this budget actually has a reduction in folks that actually drive buses, but has increases in folks that actually drive desks. You know, after two years, there's still no hope for relief. The frontline workforce is beleaguered, and so I'm looking to the board to give them a glimpse of hope. What message should I tell them? Thank you, Board. Good luck with your decision.
Thank you, Bill. And Caitlin, I am not showing anyone else indicating they would.
Okay, thank you, Camille, and thank you, Bill. And we'll go ahead and move on to Board Member Reports. There, if you look at your agenda, there was quite a few meetings. One that I do want to mention that Dawn and I had the opportunity to attend was the MPC meeting. And the good news out of that, that's very relevant to this board, is MPC officially approved our moving ahead recommendations. So thank you to, of course, all the work that our SPC and this board put in so that the MPC could actually make that approval, so now we can go ahead and move forward with the city of Eugene on those quarter recommendations. Go ahead, Pete.
Thanks, Caitlin. I, I just want to talk about the SPCs, which is your planning committee, for a second. SPC is starting to kind of go through a process of thinking about its place in the organization, and that conversation is going to come to the board sometime later this year, but I want to give everybody kind of a heads up and start thinking about that, and more details will follow, but that's, that's of the meetings I went to, that's the most relevant thing to the board.
Thank you, Pete. Other board members wish to talk about their committee, their committees.
I just have a brief update about the Contract Committee. There's an item in the Delegated Authority Report about some really fun developments from the Planning Department, and that's going to be for a more integrative system. And so just wanted to make sure people had questions about that, that they were aware that the Contract Committee had already reviewed that and approved it and are recommending approval today.
That's great. Thank you, Emily. Other, other board members. Dawn, go ahead.
Oh, just to speak briefly about the Lane Area Commission on Transportation, there was some discussion about the Arterial Bridge again, and that, that's something that was on the agenda back in 1914 or, no, 2014, but it kind of slipped off, and now it's, it's back. That's the, the bridge north of Beltway that would join the neighborhoods, north of Beltway, for inter-community service, transit service, bike ped, and all of that. It looks like that one would be still several years off because of the demands for all of the other projects that ODOT is doing now. We have a, a big intersection development just by Fern Ridge and the one in Crestwell and other things that are happening. But ODOT is investing quite a bit, or the state of Oregon is, investing quite a bit through the stiff monies and stuff to improve transportation services in our region. And we do have a new ODOT representative from Area 2. Ferney Brendel had been doing that for decades, as far as I know, and has now just been replaced by. All right, I'm sorry, I don't have it in my note there, but we will.
Jim Gamble, I think is his name.
Yes, that's right. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, anyone else? Camille, there is one change to make. There, there was an ONPOC meeting, actually, on May 13th that I attended, and, and there, just for knowledge of the board, ONPOC is statewide, and we, some of the topics in this particular meeting, was something about BEN MPO and some rail and some other stuff that's not really relevant to our LTD business, but what I would say is that this is a quarterly meeting, and one of you will get to do this next year, so I'm happy to talk more in length for if anyone's interested in representing at the statewide little level on POC. But Camille, just that correction that it was on May 13th.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else before we move on? Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to the Consent Calendar. And what discussion do we have there? If, if there's no discussion, feel free to make a motion for approval.
I move adoption of LTD Resolution Number 2022-518022. It is hereby resolved that the Consent Calendar for May 18th, 2022 is approved as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Dawn. Any, any more discussion or any discussion?
I was just going to ask for future delegated authority reports. If we could get amounts on everything, that would be helpful, but otherwise I don't have any comments.
All right, if there's no other comments or discussion at this time, we'll do a roll call vote. Don Norden?
Here.
Yes, or I, okay. I think that was a yes. Okay, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, Emily?
Yes.
Thanks, Susan? Thanks, Susan. Pete?
Aye.
Thanks, Pete. And I also vote aye, so that passes unanimously. Thank you. So let's go ahead and move right into our first presentation of the evening. So we're going to bring back Christina. And we are looking to adopt the budget. And keep in mind, we've already had our Budget Committee meetings and then our public hearings last time. And so now we are looking for actual adoption of the budget. And we will go through and actually do separate agenda items and separate motions and adoptions, as you can see on your agenda for the budget, the CIP and the Long Range Financial Plan. So Christina, welcome. Good to have you back.
Yep, thank you very much, President Vargas. And yes, I will be requesting today your adoption of three documents, the proposed 2023 budget, the 2022 through 2031 Community Investment Plan, and the 2022 through 2031 Long Range Financial Plan. And at the April 20 Board Meeting, we held a public hearing on all three of these documents. And today's request for adoption is the culmination of an eight-month process, which started with the review of the preliminary CIP at the October 2021 Budget Committee. Our process included four opportunities for the public to comment in person at two Budget Committee meetings and two Board meetings. In addition to the ability to comment by email, we provided detailed presentations and two higher-level video summaries that explained our process, how the planning and budget documents interrelate, and key fiscal year 23 budget highlights. The documents that we are requesting for your adoption today are unchanged from what was approved by the Budget Committee on April 12. If there are no questions on these documents, I would like to request the Board's adoption of the 2023 budget with a total appropriation of $162,169,989. The 2022 through 2031 Community Investment Plan and the 2022 through 2031 Long Range Financial Plan, either as presented or with any amendments that are recommended by the Board. And then, once adopted, these documents will be posted on the LTD website, and the fiscal year 23 budget will be filed with the state of Oregon. And I wanted to draw your attention to note a correction on the last line of the budget resolution. This line should read $162,169,989. I updated the detailed appropriations table, but I inadvertently missed updating the last line of the resolution to reflect the total appropriation amount. So my apologies for that oversight on my part. But does anybody have any questions?
Christina, thank you for calling out that, that correction. We appreciate that. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Dawn Norden for a few moments. I apologize, everyone. I'm at work and I've got to attend some business, and I'm going to turn it over to Dawn at this time.
Christina, do you mind if I ask, was that adjustment on page 14 of 39 on the board packet? Just to make sure I was following where that edit was.
It's in the resolution, and I actually, I, I, I'd have to look to see what page that's on because I, I only look at my resolution, but I, I wasn't looking at the whole packet. But let me see if I can find it.
No problem. Is it like the orange and blue little chart?
Yeah, the orange and blue chart is correct. It's just a line right above it.
Sixteen, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The chart is absolutely correct, Emily. I just didn't update the one line right above it. Thank you. Dawn? You're on mute.
I'm here.
Thank you.
So. I'm sorry, I have to open another, go to a different computer to get this. Can someone direct me to the right page?
They were talking about page 16, Dawn. So a corrected resolution will be provided for signature for the board.
And the page 16 is the resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 annual budget.
I see it here. I guess that usually comes up in the. So do I have a proposed motion here? Anyone? Motion to move for adoption of the LTD Resolution Number 2022-0518023. Anyone?
Sure, I'll do it. So I'll move adoption of LTD Resolution Number 2022-05-18-023. It's hereby resolved that the LTD Board of Directors adopts the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 budget as presented with Christina's edit that she mentioned.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. It moved by Emily and seconded by Pete. All in favor? Uh, no, we'll go by roll call here. So Pete Knox?
It, it, just a point of order here. You.
Well, we should have another discussion.
We should ask for discussion prior to voting.
You're correct. I'm sorry. So any further discussion on this proposal?
I just always like to remind when we're adopting a budget that just because we have the budget set doesn't mean we can't make edits and amendments along the way. So just friendly reminder that, you know, just because the budget's in place doesn't mean we have to follow it without any further amendments or conversations. So always just like to remind us of that because I get a little bit worried that the budget gets set and then we just keep rolling forward without really reconsidering things when it might be necessary.
Thank you, Emily. Susan, do we have a?
I, I mean, Emily, I appreciate what you were just saying. I'm wondering at some point, how is the board going to respond to Bill Bradley and the concerns that he brought up? I think those are at least something that we need to react and respond to.
But would you like me to comment on that or?
Please, Mark.
Yeah, I, I think we, I mean, this whole budget process with the discussion was about kind of holding our ground on service because of people's travel patterns have changed. And we decided it was a year to collect data and try to understand how that changed and how we would have bad back service. And so the union has had three or four months to, to give us input on that. And, and to wait until adoption night is, you know, probably a little disingenuous. So I think, you know, we're fully staffed as far as operators giving the number of hours that we have budgeted. And so, you know, certainly, we are watching over time. I mean, and making sure that, you know, we aren't working people too hard. So the budget reflects our, our values and, and the discussions we've had up until this point, so.
Susan, you have a comment?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm a bit concerned about saying that the comments are disingenuous. I think they were pretty sincerely felt or at least expressed. So I mean, I guess from my perspective, I want to be on record saying that I think this is an area of concern and that we really do have an obligation to make sure that the employees are feeling well-cared-for and, and that we think they're a priority.
I completely agree.
Thank you, Susan. Any further comment or discussion?
Just for my own understanding, if there is a bid for additional service hours, we would be able to reallocate some funds in the budget to be able to accommodate for hiring, et cetera.
Yeah, and it probably require a supplemental budget, but supplemental budgets aren't unusual. I mean, if, if things change and we decide, yeah, we really need to add some service back, we can certainly come back to the board with a supplemental budget.
Okay, are we prepared to vote on the motion? So I'll do a roll call again. Pete Knox?
Aye.
Michelle Weber?
Yes.
Susan Cox? Emily Secord?
Yes.
And myself, I'll vote yes. And we will assume that Caitlin will, but we can't assume. We'll just have to say she's absent for this particular vote. And so this measure passes Resolution 2022-05018-023 as passed. So then I.
Thank you. And, and Board, the next one, Dawn, is on page 21. It's Resolution Number 2022-05-18-024. And it is the Community Investment Plan.
Okay, so the proposed motion for the Community Investment Plan? Do I have any? Anyone going to move to propose this?
I got it, Dawn. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I move adoption of LTD Resolution Number 2022-05-18-024. It is hereby resolved that the LTD Board of Directors approves the fiscal year 2022-2031 amended CIP as presented.
No, second that.
Then moved by Michelle and seconded by Emily. Any further discussion on the Community Investment Plan? Hearing none so far. Roll call, Pete Knox?
Aye.
Michelle Weber?
Yes.
Susan Cox?
Aye.
Emily Secord?
Aye.
And myself, Dawn Norden, aye. And we'll.
Thank you again. The next one is on page 25, Dawn. It's Resolution Number 2022-05-18-025. And it is the fiscal year 2022 through 2031 Long Range Financial Plan.
Okay, so is there movement to approve? For? LTD Resolution Number 2022-05-18-025?
I'll do that. I move to the adoption of LTD Resolution Number 2022-05-18-025 is hereby resolved that the LTD Board of Directors approves the fiscal year 2022 to 2031 Long Range Financial Plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved by Pete, seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion on the Long Range Financial Plan?
Yeah. Christina, will you remind us when we review this again? I, I know we had some short-term considerations, and I just wanted to remember when the next time the Long Range Plan gets updated or at least reviewed, if there are some significant adjustments with.
Yeah, so the Long Range Financial Plan is a plan that we update annually. And so it, it, it's just a plan, so it doesn't appropriate any dollars at all. And we do it as, along with our, when we do the budget process, so that we are thinking long-term as well as immediate term.
Thank you. I had a feeling it was more frequently than I was imagining, so appreciate that reminder.
Thank you so very much, everybody. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Okay. So it would be, we just voted on that, right? No, that, that was the earlier one. Okay. So if there's no further discussion, anyone to make, approve this motion?
Yeah, I think you can do a roll call, Dawn. I think we're ready. Yeah, you're good.
Thank you for getting me straightened down here. Okay, Pete Knox?
Aye.
Michelle Weber?
Yes.
Susan Cox?
Aye.
Emily Secord?
Yes.
And myself, Dawn Norden, I, also I. And Caitlin hasn't appeared yet, so she'll miss this vote. And Gino hasn't. Okay, so now we can go on to the next item. So do we have a contract thing here?
It's a strategic business plan update, Dawn. I think Kalina's come here to present that.
I'm sorry, I just have to, I don't have the tech to find these things. You just have to scroll through this. All right, so Kalina is here.
Are you all seeing my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Kalina Beard, Director of Business Services. Kim Lay, our project manager, has moved on to pursue other endeavors. As the project champion, I'll be stepping in to provide the quarterly updates, along with Amy Reichardt, our IT Project Manager, and the data guru for this project, along with Nicole Cleary of TransPro. Together, we will continue to manage our district's strategic business plan. This is our second quarterly progress update for fiscal year 2022, covering our progress for Q3 or the period January to March 2022. Give me one moment. I'm sorry. My apologies. I need to move this to presentation mode. Do you guys see the agenda now?
In presentation mode?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, and my apologies for that. Today, we'll recap the quarter two results, discuss quarter three progress, and provide a sneak peek into what to expect in quarter four. As a note, the mission, vision, and values were also updated as part of the development of our strategic business plan. Hopefully, you've, you've seen this slide in all of the district presentations. It serves as a reminder of what we are striving to achieve, why we do what we do, and how we will accomplish our success outcomes. To measure our progress, LTD has selected 24 metrics to score across the five strategic areas of focus and to help us align the district's priorities. Our goal is to achieve a perfect score of 100 by 2024. Scores are calculated by an independent third-party consultant based on the metrics we report each quarter. All of the tactic, tactical efforts we are undertaking is in service of achieving our key success outcomes across our five strategic areas of focus. In Q2, we achieved 45.6 out of an overall 100 points, representing 17% completion. In our quarter two status provided in February, we previously reported the total points obtained as 45.8. We made a correction in employee engagement as a result of an update to the milestone progress to not yet started. As we are tracking and verifying data, we'll continue to provide these types of metrics on time. However, if additional information comes in, the prior reports are adjusted and adjustments are noted at the time of the next report. Give me one moment. I have a helpful. Give me one moment. I have a helpful assistant that's let me know that what you are actually seeing is not the presentation view. So thank you, Priyanka. So on on slide six, sorry, all I am having technical difficulties here. On slide six, which is our success outcomes, our strategic areas of focus, we um are showing our progress for quarter three, and I just want to make sure and get some feedback. Of what you all see, is that clear on the screen? You can read the, okay, great. And my apologies on that. Both the customer satisfaction and employee engagement surveys have just concluded. We will have more information to report on both of these strategic areas of focus in quarter four. It is noteworthy to state that on our customer satisfaction survey, we received two thousand two hundred and seventy-seven total responses. This is greater than our prior year's responses, and it far exceeds the minimum one hundred responses required to participate in the survey performed by the American Bus Benchmarking Group. For community value, we want to establish a baseline and then improve on it by five percent. Since we've never formally measured our value to the community, we will be conducting a community value survey in the late summer, early fall of this year. For financial health, we are still on track to achieving our three-year rolling financial plan target. We're focusing on three things to keep the district financially healthy. They are board-informed decision-making through the new quarterly reports, developing reserves to mitigate the impacts of unexpected economic disruption, two of which you all have recently adopted. And lastly, we're focused on continuous improvement to increase the cost efficiency of our service delivery. Lastly, we've reduced our overall GHG emissions by seventy-seven percent since FY twenty eighteen, which currently exceeds our goal in sustainability. In Q three, we achieved forty-seven point seven points out of an overall one hundred points, representing twenty-two percent completion. As a reminder, we've selected thirty-one projects internally that would contribute to achieving success in our strategic areas of focus. Each tactic has clear milestones, goals, owners, and teams. These projects do not represent all the district's activities, solely those key activities and initiatives that will drive this year's success. And now I'll turn it over to Amy Riker to to a deeper dive into our points progress for quarter three.
Thanks, Kalina, and thank you, Board, for your attention and guidance on this important plan. Um so what you can see here is our QT, Q two versus our Q three results. Something really important to note about this, as we're measuring in each of these areas, we have different kinds of metrics. Some are measured annually, some are measured quarterly, some are measured monthly. So when we look at this, we only really had space to improve quarter over quarter in our customer satisfaction scores at this point, and what you see here is that we did improve, so this is good news. And so while we only see movement from a total of forty-five point six out of a hundred to forty-seven point seven out of a hundred, this actually represents us capitalizing on the areas that we had to improve within customer satisfaction. That's all, that's all I'll say about that unless there's questions after.
Thank you, Amy. So we have many plans for this upcoming quarter, the current quarter that we're in. We're targeting tactics and metrics that missed their mark last quarter, namely those around customer satisfaction and employee engagement. With the completion of those surveys, we will establish baselines and begin to implement recommendations based upon those results. As mentioned earlier, we will be conducting the cus- uh Community Value Survey in late summer, early fall. We will also perform our refresh activities, which is a part of the normal cadence and activities involved in the Strategic Business Plan. We are implementing tactics and measuring our successes in a manner that has not been done before at LTD. The first one or two quarters is about calibration, getting the system in place, and we're learning as we go. As this was our first year, and Mark likes to say, we didn't know what we didn't know, this will be a great opportunity for us to perform a post-mortem of activity this year and to integrate the lessons learned into year two of the Strategic Business Plan. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
So uh Suzanne, uh Susan. You're muted.
Thank you for that, yeah, thank you for that report. It's it's a lot of information. And so a few of these um measurements are 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 new. They haven't been done before, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there, will there be an opportunity for um the board to see the the data rather than I mean, just how it, how it um how it looks in in more detail? Is that a possibility?
I think that that is uh the plan is to
Okay.
the actual, and we'll be providing that information out to the employees and the board as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kalina. Thanks for the presentation. I just had a quick question. Um as we have more data, for example, like the number of responses we received, will we recalibrate that benchmark to be a higher number going forward for that particular um segment of the chart, or is it, you know, sort of where it is, is where it's gonna stay, do you think?
I think that for, as I stated, we're kind of taking, doing a post-mortem of our first year. And so there were some goals that we set, like the sixty-five uh in the net promoter score. But what we saw is historically, we were averaging around twenty, so we'll do some adjustments there. But even as we're, like you said, achieving more responses on our customer satisfaction, I think it would be prudent for us to go back to reassess and to see where we can um move forward and how we might stretch ourselves, because the whole thing is uh to have these success outcomes to be um connecting our community in a better way. So, thank you.
Yes, I really appreciate that, you know, this is the first time we're doing this, and we're finally getting some numbers on the board that are not just speculation or projections. So thank you, Kalina and Amy, for this report. Is there anything else? Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Susan, again. You're muted, Susan.
I know, I'm having trouble. So when you um talking about being able to present the data later, will the public also have a chance to see it and and review the information?
Absolutely. I mean, we're a public agency, so we really don't have any information that we can hold. Uh I think, you know, if we're looking at the purpose of the strategic business plan and doing this quarterly reporting, it's toward the purpose of being more transparent and allowing more visibility into the inner workings of the district, and so that's our goal. I want to also add that I failed to say is that we are one of the inaugural signatories for the Trans dash dashboard, which is seeking to sort of replace an outdated model in um transportation, the National Transit Database. And that will, once we get it up and rolling, will be posted on our website so that any member of the public is able to access and kind of drill down as much as they
That's great.
want to into the data as we're posting it.
Right, thank you.
So, anyone else here? Are we ready to move to the next item, which would be the Interim General Manager's Quarterly Review? Okay, then I guess we turn that over to you, Mark.
That would be good. Yeah, this is so every quarter, um you know, and that uh we kind of want to have a discussion about um, you know, the general manager's performance. Um and I, you know, think it's an important discussion to have in terms of, you know, what um the general manager could be, could be doing better, or, you know, what things the board would like to see maybe different, or where general manager is doing okay or well, and and so um, you know, I just think it's a good conversation on a regular basis to have. And um, you know, it just creates a a, I think, a good uh communication environment to um talk about um, you know, what what the board would like to see on the general manager. Um certainly, I um have some things that um in my um document that I provided about, you know, what we've been doing, what I think is important, what things I've been focusing on, you know, how I've been communicating and some of the other things. Uh but, you know, the the reality is, um I report to the board. And if the things that I'm kind of outlining aren't important to the board, then we need, then we need to have uh, you know, discussion that. And so um uh for now, I'll leave it there for discussion until, and then I'll go into um, you know, the uh areas of of focus and and what, and talk about the strategic business plan. And one thing about that, I mean, we're only like uh six or eight months into the strategic business plan implementation, and, you know, they're they're doing great work, and I think that um uh, you know, and Kalina's point that it just is really designed to so that we are more transparent, that, you know, once we get our our dashboard and things up and running, that, you know, everybody, it'll be on our website, anybody can have access to it and see what we're doing in a lot of areas, and and uh look at the data and and look how we, how we uh manage um um, you know, uh manage for success based on, you know, our values and our our uh strategic plan in general, so. So I'll leave it there and and open up for discussion and and then I'll go into uh um the performance report.
Thank you, Mark. Um so quite a bit of material there. Does anyone have comments or questions right now? See anyone raising their hands at the moment?
Michelle's got hers, then.
Oh, there we go. Michelle?
Thank you, Dawn. Yeah, I just want to say how nice it is to have, um, you know, from where we started, when I joined the board to where we are today, to have these really comprehensive written communications to tell us what is happening inside LTD and the efforts that are being made. And every, you know, when I read these, I'm just really, really impressed with with all of the hard work that's being done.
Thank you, Michelle.
I, you know, I think one thing that Kalia mentioned too was the twenty-seven hundred responses that we've got on our um our customer service survey, um your customer satisfaction survey, and and that was a um highest number of any of the group, and we're one of the smallest agencies. So we were really, that's really impressive, and we're um, you know, marketing really put it out there and did a great job of of um generating interest and in getting the input, so. So I'll be really interested in the, the results should be available by next quarter, so.
This will be very helpful for our next general manager. Next, next month, we'll have to.
It's all about setting everybody up for success, Dawn.
That's right. It looks like uh they'll be able to walk right in. And thank you, Mark. Thank you for your leadership in this.
Sure.
We also have a question about money here too, but I guess we'll get into that.
Correct. If there's no more discussion here, we'll talk about kind of the performance uh measures and where we are and and um um the uh performance-based compensation.
It looks like Caitlin's back. If she wants to take over, that's well, we'll continue.
Okay. So um, you know, the performance-based uh consultation is really based on our strategic business plan and our five areas of focus, and you know, uh Kalina and Amy talked about our our scorecard and what um what things kind of um go into that. And so I um went over that briefly here. Um, you know, as far as customer satisfaction, and they talked about that a little bit. I mean, we're shooting for a really high net promoter score, which is really a good thing, but there's a lot of things that go into uh creating an environment where people want to uh promote, you know, LTD. And some of the things that it uh this quarter that were i- impressive, and I think get us there, one is uh is the um you know, getting the survey out and getting that done, which is, you know, kind of a huge first step to um to the uh measuring results. Uh but also things that go into customer satisfaction are things like safety and on-time performance and uh customer complaints and accidents and all of those kind of things that are important to our customers, and and we've, we improved in in nearly all of them this quarter. Um and you can look and this uh go, if we go down this customer impression of safety and security, it's a, you know, goals two, and our score was two, customer impression of operating courtesy, scores two, goals two. Um impression of on-time performance. Our on-time performance is always really good. It's one of the best in the industry, so people uh understand, or customers understand that, you know, when our buses, we say our buses are gonna be there, they're there, and that's really important for people to get around. Uh the net promoter score, since we don't have one at this point, we haven't um you know, we've got the goal, but we haven't uh really established that that um, and we won't do that until next quarter. Um but then we get into the accident rate, which was uh we reduced this year as well as the customer comment rate. And so all the, all the uh the um foundation for, you know, raising that uh net promoter score and uh increasing customer service um are are in place. You know, we're doing uh the things we should be doing and in in terms of um um, you know, service on the street. And so so in that area, um, you know, I think the, um, let me look here. And this is, I think, the highest area uh for uh compensation is seventy-five hundred dollars. Well, we've still got a lot of work to do. And so, but we've done a lot, and so um my requested performance compensation for customer satisfaction is two thousand dollars for this quarter. And um and then employee engagement, we did a lot of work employee engagement too. Uh Perry, our new HR director, we've been working really closely to take a look at, you know, what's going on in the um at the agency. We did complete our uh customer, uh I mean, our employee engagement survey. Uh we just rolled that out this afternoon, and and we've got to do some uh some reviews and and uh put a work plan together to to address uh areas that were identified as as problem areas. So um since we, and we did get the survey done, which is important work, it'll give us our baseline to understand how how we move forward, but I didn't think we'd really gotten far enough or understand enough yet to to ask for any um, any uh performance compensation in that area. And then, and the same with community value. Uh we're still uh uh getting the survey ready. The survey won't be out till the summer sometime. And so uh we've got to establish the baseline and and uh so we've got some work to do there, so there's um I also didn't request any um performance-based compensation in that area. And then in financial health, we've done a, actually, a really good job and get, setting ourselves up for long-term success. And, you know, with the policies that uh we've been working on to include uh our our reserve policy and some other things we've been working on at the board. And um, you know, we're lo- always looking at um, you know, operating costs and maintenance costs and and vehicle for hours for labor and uh, you know, trying to to manage to that and and making sure that uh we're being efficient as we, as we can. And so um since we made good headway last um, last quarter, um the um, I am requesting the rest of the um uh max for uh for financial health, which is uh additional twelve hundred and fifty, and that's uh, that would max that out for the year. And then sustainability, we uh kind of knocked it out of the park last quarter, and the the board um um gave me the full amount because we um, we achieved our third, three-year goals in a matter of um three months, so it was uh um pretty remarkable. And so um total, I'm requesting for this year for uh financial is twelve hundred and fifty, and then uh customer satisfaction um a two thousand for a total of thirty-two fifty, so. And I'm open to any discussion or questions around any of that.
Mark, I'm, sorry, thanks, Dawn. Um on your um document that you're using. On your um document that you're using, will you do us a favor just to um kind of like, like you said, tee up this conversation for the next person who's using this report? Um I found the maximum amount kind of confusing whether it was annual or quarterly, um so just wondered uh if that would be something that you could just. Throw in there um to define the timeline for that, that'd be helpful, so then we can better understand.
Yeah.
What category or not.
Yeah, it is annually. Yeah, that's the annual amount, so, yeah.
Susan?
Thank you. Um, Mark, I appreciate uh all the information, but um I'm just wondering if there is a little bit more of a breakdown. I know when we were talking about outreach to the community, there was a real um priority given to to um. Diversity communities of of race and ethnicity, um marginalized communities. Is there a breakdown anywhere that um identifies how we did the outreach to them? Um, I know we had talked about that um. You know, in in one of the one of the meetings and I'm just curious to know. Um, how did that, how did that break down? And then I I guess this is a another, I know this is a sort of a new um process that is taking place and I I think it's. Um important to compensate people on uh performance, but I'm. Curious is this also, what is the compensation process for other exempt staff? I mean, obviously, people who are hourly, have overtime and so on, but people who are um exempt. They work a lot of hours. Is there a a compensation process or protocol for them?
Yeah, in fact, we um are in the middle of a process, so. You know, changing in the way that we worked, what we've done over the last year with the strategic business plan, a part of it is. Um performance management and and uh awards and recognition and all of those things kind of um. Work together to create a really good system and so we just got done with an overall comp study. For all the um administrative employees. And so uh to make sure that number one, we're paying market. And if we're not, we're having to make adjustments which are which are reasonable. And um and then um the next step is creating uh the performance management system and and. Um Perry, our our uh HR director, we've had uh. Discussions a- around that and uh but. You know, you've got to do it right and it's got to be fair and it's and it takes some time to put those in place. And so we are working on it and we do want to create a performance uh driven organization and reward good performance. And so um we are working on it, it's just not all in place yet. And and when I introduced this, it was really, look, we we've got to start somewhere in terms of and in and. Try to work it through the organization and so um, you know. So that's what that's kind of what this is about is trying to um, you know. Get it started and and um again, we're working on the rest of the organization.
So so there will be a comprehensive um protocol for not just the general manager, but for other people who work in there. Okay, and then um if you if you did have any information on the outreach part to the different communities.
Yeah, um I I'll have to just uh I'll have to look, I mean, uh we've got a lot of.
Be great.
Got a lot of people out in the community doing a lot of different things and so um. Uh um I I can um take a look at that and, you know, I know we, you know, we work with the uh uh um, you know. People with disabilities and, you know, I and o- other groups, so let me let me take a look at that and I can I can get that together.
I I will just say, and this is something that resonates with me specifically um with all of the um. API hate crimes that have happened in the last year or two years. And a number of them have happened on public transportation. So I'm very interested to know what does the local API community feel in terms of um their safety and. Um anyway, that that's just a a population uh that I'm specifically concerned for.
Yeah, no, no, and I I I fully understand that and I and yeah, let let me look, I don't know if I can get the really get. Uh at that uh granular of level of data, um you know, with uh with the kind of surveys and thing we've done so far. But certainly, we can reach out individually to those those groups and have discussions, so, yeah.
If nobody else has a question, um I wondered, Mark, and and this is sort of a um, I think you use the phrase or somebody used the phrase on your behalf. And we don't know what we don't know. And so one of the things I wondered about this system is if we're doing any kind of calibration. Um for when we're at full service levels versus if we're at a lowered capacity. So for an example, it's not apples to apples to compare um number of accidents if we have half as many routes running or something to that effect. So I just wanted to wonder, curious if there's like an averaging effect or some sort of recalibration that we maybe need to consider putting in the system. Um since you were working on it most recently, I'm gonna uh pick your brain about it.
Yeah, our our accident rate is based on on mileage, so it's accidents per hundred thousand miles. And so so it, yeah, it goes, it's a ratio. And so it makes it no matter how many miles you put on your, you know, your and then so are so are accidents. I mean, so are um are uh complaints and they're per bo- per hundred thousand boarding or maybe it's a, yeah. And so so that, yeah, so.
Same.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
So. I'd like to segue a bit on Susan's comment, our question about the employees. Our employee of the month always got some reward or bonus. Is that still carry through? Cause we haven't been doing that physically, we don't see that happening, so. There's still a bonus for the employee of the month.
They do, yeah, they still, I think, uh, yeah, they still get a um, I think it's a hundred dollar reward along with um. Along with uh, you know, a pin in the sweater and different things over the years. It has changed a little bit over the years, but yeah.
Uh Pete, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Thanks a lot and uh. Thanks, Mark, for your excellent report. Um I I have a question about the sustainability. Um section, whi- which, you know, you point out that that we had a, you know, because of because of some some moves that we were taking. We ma- hit some major milestones pretty early and we're uh from where I sit. Then and maybe you can correct me here is that it looks like it's going to be. A lot harder to to get more sustainability out of this the thing and are are is. Are we calibrating your your um bonus structure to uh understand how that that's going to be? Because I because we did wonderfully to get to seventy seven percent reduction and it's getting that next. The twenty three percent is going to be a much harder and longer road, so to speak.
Yeah, well, and and that's the discussion that we have, you know, um. During the annual review process and as we look at the goals for next year. I mean, if we're at we're if we're at eighty percent of our twenty thirty goal, that's probably not a high um uh. You know, important goal for next year, you know, we kind of said sign we will we'll keep heading that way, but maybe there's some different things that we really need to look at next year. Because we've, you know, kind of achieved that goal and and we'll keep getting, you know, getting better. And that you're right, that last ten percent is probably the hardest to knock off, right? And so uh we'll have to look at that. I mean, we've still got more electric buses coming in. And we've got, you know, buses being ordered as we go on and so um, you know, I'm I'm pretty confident that we'll reach our twenty thirty goal. Um, you know, to be um um. Greenhouse gas or fossil fuel uh free and so um, so, yeah, so you're right. Um, you 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 know, next year, the goals may be uh different, you know, it may be sustainability and may not be really high on list. Because we've achieved so much. I mean, we'll still be working towards our sustainability goals, but it might be something else on the general manager's list that. Um becomes important.
Okay, that that that, yeah, that makes makes a lot of sense and answers answers my question, so we'll we'll revisit that when we we uh look at the goal setting. Thanks.
Great, you're welcome.
So do we have a a motion?
And some one more quick question. Um, Mark, are the employee responses going to be provided in full to the board for review? Um I believe we got to see those last time and it was really helpful to take it out of the chart and actually read their um uh. You know, exactly.
So we had a third party do it this time and and so I'm not quite sure. I mean, when we had full control over it, it was one thing, but um so I'm I'm. I'm sure we can provide it, but I haven't seen the whole thing yet, so, you know, Cascade, they kind of break it down into. You know, what um, you know, uh themes and different things, so um I'll have to look.
Any other questions or comments? Welcome back, Caitlin. So um. Motion?
I I'm of adoption of LTD resolution number twenty twenty two dash zero five dash eighteen dash zero two six. It's hereby resolved that the LTD Board of Directors approves the Q three performance review of the interim general manager as presented. Second.
So moved by Emily Seacord, second by Michelle Weber, um. Any further discussion? So roll call. Pete Knox?
Hi.
Michelle Weber?
Yes.
Emily Seacorn?
Yes.
Caitlin Vargas?
Hi.
Susan Cox?
Hi.
And myself, Don Norden, aye.
Thank you so much.
Now I guess we go to Tom. You want to take this from here, Caitlin?
Sure, thanks, Don. I apologize for the absence, everyone, and Don, thank you so much for doing that. I really appreciate that. Um, uh. Takes the village. Tom, thanks for joining us. We're so happy to see you and uh listen to your uh department overview.
Great, thanks, Caitlin. Um, good evening, uh board members. Before I started, I wanted to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to provide a little more information about the planning team and I I hope you find these overviews informative. Um, I I think they're a great idea. Uh, so let me start, uh as you might imagine, the need for planning is something that's been recognized since very early in the district's history. In early nineteen seventy one, less than a year after uh LTD was established. Transitioning from a private sector operator, operating very little service, we were uh the private operator had about five routes. Uh and they operated between the hours of nine AM and four PM on weekdays and that was that was it. Um, we needed to look at how we were going to best roll out our service. Uh, this led the uh LTD board to uh seek a contract with El Cog, who hired a planning engineer named Ollie Snowden. And I don't know if you know Ollie, uh but uh you might recognize his name, he was uh eventually became Lane County's Public Works Director. Uh, he worked for uh El Cog and his first work informed how LTD first began operating. Um, as some of you might be aware, at the same time LTD was getting started, the legislature passed Senate Bill one hundred. Uh, which all planners know, uh established the need for ongoing land use planning and the integration of land use and transportation planning. And that foundational context actually has led to a very robust and integrated planning process in the region over the last fifty years. And LV has been heavily involved in that planning since the very beginning. Move to the next slide here. So. While you see this slide in all of our PowerPoint presentations, I wanted to pause here uh for a moment just to emphasize the importance of these statements. In the planning work that we do, uh these statements actually frame how we approach our planning process, how we communicate. What we're doing, how we involve the community, how we connect with our partner agencies, et cetera. Uh, from the research I've been able to do, this reflects about the fourth or fifth iteration of the agency's mission and values and vision. And you might say, well, isn't a vision a vision, but actually um. I won't go into it tonight, but the language we use today as opposed to what we might have used thirty years ago reflects a number of things. In nineteen seventy eight, our general goal was to provide public transit services for the people of Lane County. Uh, in the context of where we were still in a startup mode uh for the district services, that was. That was probably uh about as good as we could get. Um, we've obviously advanced significantly since that time, both in terms of the services we operate. As well as the perspective with which we approach articulation of our mission, vision and values. Um, so I'll move on. Uh, so this is the planning team. Um, I I think you're familiar with most of them. Um, Andrew is a development planner, he's the one that uh really took moving ahead to the to the finish line. We had a couple of other people that had been managing that process uh at the beginning. Uh, but uh Andrew uh took it uh through the through the entire process.
And Tom, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Were you trying to share your screen or you just wanted us to follow along in the?
Oh, you know what? I was trying to share my screen.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought that might be the case.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Let's see here, here we go. Is that better?
Yes, we can.
You should see uh pictures of our team now. Okay, so uh, yeah, so I talked about Andrew and uh he's also managing our mobility management. Strategy and that's that's uh nearing uh completion. Um Hart Migdal, uh some of you may have met uh in the past. Uh, he is our one hundred percent remote uh planner. Uh, lives with his family in New York, which is where his wife's uh family lives. Uh, but he does a lot of our work around um NTD reporting, uh ABBG reporting. He assists Christina in the development of long range financial plan. And he'll be managing the uh the right source um operations analysis uh that we have um going through the procurement process now. Uh Jeremy Card uh is an associate planner. Uh, he started out, he's he's actually been an operator with LTD for for many years and then he came uh into the service planning. Uh uh area, but he was also going to school to finish his masters in planning, which he did a couple of years ago. And so we we actually have him straddling both uh both areas in terms of data and analysis related to service as well as. Um uh managing some of our planning projects. Um, Heather uh Lindsay is a one of our service planners, she too was an operator. Uh, she's been a service planner a little bit longer than I've been at LTD, so over fifteen years. Uh, doing doing that work. Um, and Brett Smith, also a service planner, also a former operator. Uh, uh, and together they they are the the service planning team. Uh, again, we all help out where we need to to uh and get things. Um, you know, keep things moving in that process. You'll see we have an open development planner position. Um, we uh uh just completed a process and um we should have. I in an actual case, an internal posting, so I can't, I can't say uh at this point, but uh we are in the process of filling that position. We move to the next slide here. So. We're organized in terms of service planning and development planning, those though um. Um, some of you don't may not know the the history, but when I came in in uh two thousand and seven. Uh, development planning was under, I'm sorry, development planning was part of a planning and development group that included facilities. Uh, as well as point to point. Um, and uh so obviously things have have evolved. Um, and service planning was part of the the broader marketing uh group and so. Um, under Ron Killcoin's tenure as GM, uh he actually started out in service planning, if you don't know that story. And he saw the need to bring service planning and development planning together, which makes a lot of sense. Um, and I think we're a better team uh working together and being aware of of what each other. Uh, you know, the 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 projects that development planning is working on and the kind of the service planning process that we work in. It's it's been a really fruitful uh uh combining. Um, in addition to those broad areas of service planning and development planning. We also do, as I as I indicated before, um some of the analysis and reporting that the agency is required to do. So the National Transit Database, NTD, and the American Bus Benchmarking Group, ABBG. Uh, that reporting again is is what uh Hart leads up. uh that reporting again is is what uh Hart leads up. Um we conduct the Title VI Analysis where it's required for certain major service changes and and we kind of keep our our uh Title VI Analysis uh process up to date uh as we move forward. Uh again, I mentioned uh contributions uh to Christina's development of the Long Range Financial Plan. Uh and then we do a lot of the data and GIS analysis um for the district. Uh some highlights from uh from this fiscal year, um and you're aware of a lot of this, but um adoption of the Moving Ahead Locally Preferred Alternative by the Eugene Council LTD Board and MPC um is is now in place, so uh we're uh going to be moving forward on further development uh around that project. Uh the Mobility Management Strategy is nearing completion. We are completing a series of of uh meetings with each department within the district uh to get a sense of of uh um you know, how you know, letting them know about what we're doing with the Mobility Management Strategy, but also how they might uh intersect uh you know, some of the uh implementation of that strategy. The comprehensive operations analysis scoping is complete, like I mentioned, as is the Right Source Operations Analysis Scoping. So we're again preparing for uh the work that we would uh begin likely next fiscal year. Um continued NTD and ABBG reporting. Um and the, you know, we we helped Christina with the Long Range Financial Plan. Um we also, as uh do all of the departments, uh have follow-on tasks related to the Strategic Business Plan. So we're we're doing those things. Um and then uh continued ongoing coordination with our regional partners uh within the uh Metropolitan Planning Organization. So that's Eugene, Springfield, Lane County, uh City of Coburg, LTD, ODOT. Uh and then obviously El Cog staff as well. Within service planning, uh you may or may not be aware, but uh on the technical side, we have a uh a model called Hastus that uh provides uh the ability to basically optimize our service subject to um a number of of constraints, cost and and whatnot. Um and the service planners use that tool to prepare uh the three bids a year that they uh that they prepare. Um we're beginning to look at post-COVID planning um and uh looking at uh and and working with some of our uh partner transit agencies in terms of of how uh post-COVID uh uh commutes are going to look. And uh there's some interesting thoughts on 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 how things are going to come back uh in full force. Uh the service policy uh update is is in place. Uh uh route operational analysis is an ongoing thing. We're always looking at the data that we we get a ton of data coming in on ridership and operations that allow us to find, uh you know, sometimes there'll be some some uh we'll we'll see in in the analysis that uh a particular time point on a particular route is, you know, we 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 have missed something. And so we look at why that's happening. Sometimes it's congestion. Sometimes there's a a development project that's um uh adjacent to a stop that's maybe um slowing down things. But uh that's that's the kind of thing that we do on a on a more regular basis. Uh the ongoing bid management, as I described, and then we also see um our preparations for snow and ice. Uh so if you're not familiar with with that process, we actually run a different routing system when snow is in place. Uh when it's snow, so it still exists and and we uh ramp up uh different kind of communication, make sure people that use the system can find out how best to uh to catch it. Then our next year's plan. Budget, just uh to the budget, wages and benefits are similar to previous years. Uh the senior planner position, uh it's not yet filled uh pending further assessment. Um and then with respect to our key activities, I mentioned some of those. The COA analysis uh will um kick off uh at some point next fiscal year. Um the Right Source Operations Analysis also will be kicking off. Uh we hope to have the mobility management strategy in a place where the board can review and adopt uh that strategy and we can begin applying uh that that strategy uh moving forward. Um there's a number of, you know, continuing follow-on for the Strategic Business Plan tactics um and work related to moving ahead. Um we've uh for service planning, going through a an upgrade to the Hastus uh process that uh uh thanks to IT, you know, they they help us kind of work through that upgrade uh process and then uh we'll keep doing our bid planning and our operations analysis. Um so with that, let's ask if you have any questions.
Uh thanks, Tom. If you want to stop screen sharing, no, there you go. Perfect. Um go ahead and raise your hand if you have a question. See, Tom, you you're so thorough. You covered it all.
That's it. That's it. Um well, thanks, everyone, for the opportunity to uh share what we do. And again, if you have any questions, uh you know how to get ahold of us. And uh I'm sure we'll be in front of uh the board with uh a number of these projects uh as we move forward. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Tom. We we certainly appreciate that. Um so we're going to actually move on to our next department overview. Um so Pat, thanks for joining us. Um we're super excited to hear about marketing and communications. And I know I I've said it before, but I really appreciate that you always uh include a written report um in all of our board packets. That's always really helpful. So um we we just appreciate your diligence there and we're super excited to hear from you. So floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Caitlin, and and thank you, board members. Um you have, you know, Teresa Brand does a great job rounding up all that information every month and I'm I'm grateful and that she does and I'm pleased that it's valuable to you. Well, um Camille is going to drive my slides, which is good, um so I can do what I do best, which is talk, I guess. So um anyway, uh thank you for having me here tonight. Let's go to the next couple of slides. Um I'm not going to review the mission, vision and values, but I think you've heard that several times tonight, but it is the basis of what we do to connect our communities, uh our community, which is you know, critical to all the things we do at LTD. And of course, we we live and work by these values, the respect, next slide, please, respect, integrity, uh equity, collaboration, safety. We doing okay here?
I I seem to have stalled temporarily. Apologies.
Oh.
Bear with me here.
Great. You know, it's it's good to be.
We're back online.
Okay, so as you know, these are our our values and they they really serve as the the foundation for us to be able to 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 work toward achieving our our mission and our aspiration and our um uh mission, vision and values in in terms of our mission. So so that that's great. So let's go to what our responsibilities are. Um really, what we do in marketing is is work to make the complex understandable. I mean, I'm I'm relatively new as an employee here, uh been here eight months. And one of the things that that I think is is critical is it, you know, what we do here is is fairly technical. It seems simple because all you do is get on the bus and go down the street. But actually, how that all happens and how it's funded and and everything is is much more complex than most people. Um most people would believe. So our job is to make the complex understandable. And we do that by creating communications and marketing plans. And we start with a strategy and develop messaging and do the tactical implementation. And then we do the program evaluation. I think as everybody knows, anything worth doing is worth measuring. And our whole goal is to increase and maintain ridership as well as to provide the district uh with transparency to the to our writers and to the taxpayers and into the community at large. We also serve as the district's brand manager. And and that's for everything visual, digital and and written and communications. It's important that our graphic look, our uh our messaging, all lines up and complements and supports one another regardless of what the communications medium is. And it also helps with uh building our our brand around our mission. And and so we 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 take care of the brand management for everything that comes out of the out of the district. Uh certainly externally facing. And in many ways, I look at our marketing team as an internal consultant. We work with planning, we work with with finance, we work uh with business services. We help them uh create the info, uh the the communications channels and the programs for them to be able to commute, communicate successfully with their with their key publics and their key audiences. Let's go to the next slide. Um our team is, you, we've got a great marketing team at LTD. Um Teresa Brand is our our marketing outreach and marketing manager, and she's been with the district about twelve years. Super, super project manager, does a great job working with our teams. Our marketing specialist is Kami Harris, and some of her work that she'd be most aware of, certainly the ABBG survey for um fixed routes, which was referenced earlier. She and Haley Pratt really were at the 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 tip of the spear to 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 build that um response number up from what it was last year to um a group leading number this year. So so that's one of the things she does. She also manages our uh our student pass program um with the schools, and she has some exciting things that are going to come out in the fall in terms of uh competitions between schools to get kids signed up on passes and how we can help those kids understand that by riding the bus, you know, you actually um uh having a great impact on the environment, positive impact on the environment. Haley Pratt is our digital marketing specialist. Anything you see online um comes through Haley. Um she she's been with us almost a year. She's she she does a terrific job. Cody France actually returned to LTD. He had left the agency about eighteen months ago, came back, and he's doing our employer transportation outreach. So um he's working with the with the group pass program, and I'm really excited about the work he's doing because he is reconnecting LTD to a number of the companies and organizations who had dropped their group 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 pass program as we went into the into the pandemic. And he's starting to reel those guys back in. And he's also making connections with 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 new uh group pass um users as well. I'll hopefully have a report for that here in the next couple of months with some good numbers to report. Our graphic designers, we have a senior graphic designer, Sarah Howe, who's been here for many years. And Kelly Medina joined us as a full-time employee a couple of months ago. We're very fortunate. We have seasoned graphic designers who produce everything you see uh from, you know, our our signs with the mission, vision and values to the logos that are on the buses and and everything, and they do an amazing job. And um I'm I'm really glad to have the two of them on on the team. We also have a marketing bench about three years ago. A marketing bench was established so that the marketing team would have a set of marketing, public relations firms to be able to work with regularly and be able to take advantage of each of those firms' specialty. Um so we work with the Tyrell Group. Um we do a lot of work with them. They're working on our return to ride campaign, which will you'll um launch here in the next month or so. Uh Kaywood, Liz Kaywood's team has worked with us on some public affairs issues. Revolution Design Group, they they produced our uh uh the initial round of our CIP and budget booklet. Adlib Productions, you know, when you call LTD or you sit on the bus in LTD and you hear these voices giving you directions, they they record all that for us. And Bell and Funk recently recently produced uh the videos that explain the budget. And um so we take advantage of those folks when when we can and when we're stretched um internally and when we can rely on somebody else's deeper expertise. And so we we have, like I said, a good team of people and a good marketing bench. Let's go to the next slide. Um our key highlights coming up in in FY twenty-three, of course, we want to capitalize on the momentum we've had. We're starting to do a much more research as um uh Kalina and Mark have both referenced. You know, we're in charge of the uh Community Value Survey that will be launched in um in in early August. We've just finished up create with our mark with our uh market research firm, the questions that'll be asked. But that'll go in the field in in um in August. And and to answer a question you had, Susan, we'll we'll come back with that with that market research firm and we'll make a presentation to the board in terms of what those findings are. And then we'll use that information to inform marketing and other things that we do here at the district. Our digital communications is going to continue to expand. Um we're going to add Instagram and and TikTok to our to our arsenal of Facebook, LinkedIn and uh and a and a few other uh so that we can begin to reach a younger demographic uh about things at LTD. Um we're also doing a website review. They'll be able to provide us an update with for our website. Um we'll make a few changes this year and then hopefully have uh a plan in place that we can begin to rebuild the website in in the next fiscal year, FY twenty-four. We're we're working with IT as well as the City of Eugene and the University of Oregon on the mobile wallet, which you've probably heard about. And we're going to start a branding process on that in order to come up with a name that resonates not only for LTD but also for the UVO and for the city that um that that will help, yeah, that will help us um at least have a name for that project and we'll be able to begin to market it. Um World Championships twenty-two or Oregon twenty-two. We're involved in that as well as one of our highlights here coming up. It's, you know, there, our theme is Hello World Meet LTD because we're going to take you where you need to go locally. Um we're in contact and in coordinating our efforts with the with World Championships twenty-two marketing team as well as with Travel Lane County. Um so we've got some exciting things we're going to do down at the Eugene Station uh to welcome people to 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 LTD and welcome people to Eugene. Well, also, we're almost done with a series of videos that we're going to market uh via social media, our website, and also through our partners, so people know what they can do on the bus. Yes, you can go to the meat, but you know what? You can go up to McKenzie Bridge or you can go shopping or there's places you can go to hike. And we want to be able to show people that that there's a lot of things to do on the bus. And of course, after we're done with the meat, we'll use those, we'll use those videos, you know, throughout the next couple of years with our local audience as well. We're involved with Andrew and the Sid, Andrew Martin and the uh planning team in the City of Eugene and Moving Ahead. That'll be a big project coming up. And also, we're taking on some other duties too with HR in terms of helping to build an internal communications plan that can be implemented so that we can begin to raise uh uh employee engagement and understanding about what's going on at the district. And the last couple of things, you know, certainly we're going to be involved in the introduction of the new GM to the community. As I mentioned before, we have a return to ride campaign that 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 we're almost finished producing and will be launched. Really, again, all with the intent to make the complex easier to understand. Next slide, please. Now, how we do it, you know, we do it all through collaboration. Like I said, we're an internal consultant to 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 everybody else that works here. And and that's really, so collaboration is really important under, so that, you know, everyone understands the audience, that we establish goals and and hit those goals and also that we remain flexible to new opportunities and changing conditions. Um you know, we we do a lot of program implementation. As I mentioned, the Free Student Pass is one of those uh opportunities. You know, we create all the district's collateral materials, which gets gets into our brand management program that I mentioned earlier. We create all sorts of content, social media, website. We videotape the general manager's quarterly meeting or quarterly update and and push that out. Um you know, we maintain the district's website. We also send out transit alerts when there's interruptions in service. We use our social media channels and other technologies to do that as well. And we also build community partnerships. So you know, at the beginning of COVID, we had a group of people from the City of Eugene, the county, Travel Lane County, uh City of Springfield. Uh we had, I think, twenty-four partners that we would get together once a month and talk about how it is we can, we could work together to build awareness about following the four, the social distancing, the masking, the washing hands. Um you know, that that whole that whole campaign that went on. So we we do a lot of that. And then we handle media relations, which you've probably seen us uh all the news releases we send out. Again, that's part of not only keeping the media informed, but also part of our trans effort with transparency. And then we support local and local employers through group pass, van pool, the emergency ride home program, and of course, a lot of other things. And why we do it, I think, is the next slide. Yeah, again, it's all about connecting our community, maintaining and increasing ridership, and very importantly, demonstrating value to the taxpayers and our and our government funders. We also want to maintain and build internal morale. That's the other part of communications and marketing. And we want to support community partners who share our mission, values and goals. So that's why we, how we do it and why we do it. Next slide. Is it, anybody have any questions or comments?
Thanks, Pat. That was a lot of great information. Um I'm down in the uh downtown station a lot. And um I always notice that the graphics and the flyers are getting switched out and I've always. And I've always been impressed at the high quality. There's always people reading the information down there. Like, I think I just saw the May is Bike Month ones go up and they look great. So, you know, thank you to your team for all the hard work and all the great new initiatives that you're pursuing. What kind of questions do folks have? Or comments?
Can I just share one thing really quick that I'm excited about and I'm hoping we can pull off is that we're going to, we're going to put banners up, you know, the arches downtown at the Eugene Station that cover all the entrance, we're going to put some banners up that are that are going to welcome people to Eugene. And what we did is we talked to the World Championships and said, okay, so what are the languages? What are the key languages for us to be able to use that that we that we could build these banners out of? So we're going to have, you know, one in English and of course, Spanish and Mandarin and Swahili and Arabic and and there was a couple of others. And so we're going to do that. And then on our windows, we're going to do the same thing, but we're going to include all the other languages that we know that are important here locally to wel to welcome people to the station. So that's one of the things that 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 our team is working on right now. And if we can get through the city's sign ordinance, which apparently those banners become, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to do that. But we're going to find a way to make that make that happen. So that's just one one tactic. But anyway, that's the exciting stuff. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. I know we we were on in December and I appreciate you taking time to listen to me. So thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. I think we all want LTD to be an inclusive agency. And we want folks to feel welcomed and we want to make sure there's no barriers to access when they access riding the bus. So thank you so much for sharing that. Any other questions or comments for Pat? All right. Well, then I'm sure we'll see you again soon and 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 please pass on our gratitude to your team.
I will. Thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to written reports. I want to see if board members have questions or comments or any discussion about the written reports. Okay. All right. So let's go ahead and move on to the items for action or information at a future meeting. This is a agenda item that was requested by the board.
I just wondered, I'm sorry if I should ask this later, but I didn't see the bylaws conversation back up for a future agenda item yet. And I just wondered if we had a sense of what that timeline looked like.
Yes, so I have been working through some coordination on my end to be able to get the next ad hoc committee meeting scheduled. I hope to have that resolved by the end of the week and you should see a doodle poll come out for that. And then after that meeting, based on the committee feedback, we will then return the discussion to the full board.
So August.
If that's what the the ad hoc committee advises, then yes.
Yeah, it has to either be the June or 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 August. Well, it could be at the work session though, in July. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, well, we're we're done a few minutes early. Thank you, everyone. And Dawn, thank you again for stepping in and and helping out. I really appreciated that. Speaking of that, I will be on a work conference trip in June. So when you all get together in person, I'm so sorry, won't be able to join you. Dawn will be leading that meeting and I will be the first board meeting I have missed in three and a half years. Can you believe it? But and and it'll be the the funnest one. So I'll get to get back together. So with that, I look forward to seeing you all next week. Thank you so much to not just the board, but all of our audience members, LTD staff, everyone that was here this evening. We we always appreciate the engagement. So everyone have a great evening and this meeting is officially adjourned.